Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. I call this meeting to order and kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call. Chuck Brown?
Here.
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Don Cummings?
Here.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Here.
Dean Kilburg?
Here.
Craig Maladra?
Here.
Richard Marks?
Here.
Mary Sino?
Here.
Tom Simonian?
Here.
Ron Singer?
Here.
We've got a full house tonight. We begin our city council meetings with the pledge of allegiance, and I would like to ask our Geneva High School dance team to please lead us in the pledge. We will follow your lead, ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. There's a young man seated to my right, his name is Jason, and he was worried that the basketball game tonight started at 7:00. But it doesn't start until 8:18, Jason, so we're gonna keep here till 8:15. Fourth grader at Harrison Street, who are you rooting for tonight?
The Mavericks.
You just made the commander of the police department very happy. I would like to entertain a motion to open the public hearing on the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget.
So moved.
Motioned by Marks, seconded by Flanagan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The public hearing on the 2015-2016 budget is open for comments from anyone in the audience first. By way of summary, we are considering investing $90 million to the 2015-2016 year. No questions, ladies? It's all for new food at the cafeteria. From the council. Hearing none, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motioned by Marks, seconded by Alderman Bruno. All in favor of closing the public hearing on the budget, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The hearing is closed. Item 3B, public hearing on an ordinance proposing the enlargement of the boundary of special service area number 15, correction, 16, to include Lincoln Square subdivision.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Brown, seconded by Alderman Flanagan. Any questions or comments? We do have the petitioner's attorney with us tonight, who is oh-so excited to get out here early, aren't you?
Did you want to vote on the opening?
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor of opening the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me. Also a Wisconsin alum. Your enthusiasm is overwhelming, by the way. From the audience, from the dais, any questions or comments regarding this matter? Motion to close the public hearings in order.
So moved.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion, Alderman Marks makes the second, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 3C, recognize the Geneva High School state... The grammar here is brutal, it's like my brother wrote this. Recognize Geneva High School state dance champions. What the...2015 IHSA state dance champions, correct? Something like that. Many of you have been here before, right? That's pretty cool, repeat. This is awesome. Are you gonna intentionally flunk your senior years, you gonna do it again? You are? Uh-oh. Where's the coach?
Some of them gymnast.
Come up to the podium, coach. Ladies, you know this coach is just texts like nobody's business. How was your ski trip to Colorado?
It was good, I fell.
Did you really?
Mm-hmm.
And where were you skiing?
At Loveland in Denver.
So the school's paying for your trip because you won the state championship?
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Do you wanna say anything about these young ladies before we begin?
I do, I think they, I mean, they obviously had a big accomplishment at state this year, it was very well deserved, they worked very hard, but on top of that, I think that they're just really great young ladies, and they're really great young people, and they've been doing a lot in the community this year, too, which I think is one of my proudest things of them. They went to feed my starving children this year, we performed at the library for their Christmas show, we helped with some of the GAF fundraisers, they participated in a walk to help raise money for breast cancer research, so they've just been doing a lot beyond just dancing this year, so as proud as I am of them for winning their first consecutive, like, state title, I think those are the things I'm more proud of them for, is that they are reaching outside of just themselves and just not worrying about what they want and their goals and helping others.
And how long have you been coaching?
It's my second year.
So, two years, two state championships.
Yes.
Do you have offers anywhere else to go?
I would not leave.
Not at all. How about Dancing with the Stars?
That would be cool.
That's not really dancing, is it?
It is, yeah, it's hard. They do ballroom though, so it's different.
Where is the USA Ballroom National Governing Body located?
I don't know. Am I supposed to know this?
You should know it. Up in Wisconsin.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, I believe it's Stevens Point, actually.
Cool.
Little-known things.
Trivia.
I was actually on the 1964 Olympic ballroom dancing team.
Were you? Did you win the gold?
Ladies, I have a certificate for each of you to recognize your accomplishment, if I may. I'm not gonna provide, or, excuse me, present the certificate though until you come to the podium and introduce yourself to everybody. And as a heads up, I think I told most of you, this is being televised live.
They're all here.
Pardon me?
They couldn't all make it today.
Oh, that's okay, we'll just raise their taxes. Coach, you can help me.
Okay.
In case there's a name I can't pronounce or something. You can tell me they're here, too. Oh, good. Alexis Pender, where's Alexis?
Right here.
Coach, you and I will stand here, come on up Alexis. We'd love to know, why not here, at the podium?
What grade are you in?
Freshman.
You got lots to learn, aren't you?
Okay. Coach and I are gonna stay over here. This is like speech class. See, we're mic'd, so we're good. You're on TV. You're a freshman.
Yeah.
Brothers and sisters?
Yeah. Two brothers and sisters.
Are you the oldest?
Yeah.
Well, you are, so you're blazing the trail.
Yep.
Are your brothers dancers?
No.
Your sister? Do you have a sister here?
No.
Oh, she's in eighth grade?
Seventh.
So you're following your footsteps? So freshman year, so far so good?
Yeah.
Everything you expected?
Yeah.
Anything a little unsettling about high school?
Not really.
So, now, where do you go from here, though? Freshman, win a state championship, now what?
Next year.
So the academics is really impressive, isn't it? Are your mom and dad here?
Yeah.
Where are they?
My mom's right there.
Oh, yeah, I was talking to you earlier. Oh, yeah. She said you were kind of an unusual young lady, but I think you're great. This is for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Carly R...
Rogeri.
Rogeri.
This one's gonna be good.
Don't tell me you're a freshman.
Yeah.
Why is Carly gonna be good? Okay, Carly, what should we know about you? You're a freshman?
I don't know.
Is your mom and dad here tonight?
Yeah.
Is your dad taking the picture?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that guy. He was hiding back there for a moment, then snuck out there. Brothers and sisters?
Yeah, I have a sister.
Where's your sis? Oh, there she is, how old are you?
Twelve.
Twelve, so, let's see, that's seventh grade? Sixth? Sixth grade?
Yeah.
South or north?
North.
North. Cool. Freshmen year's treating you well?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Uh-huh.
What was the most exciting thing about winning state this year?
I don't know.
Except for the police escort home.
It was just like...
We did provide a police escort home, but...
It was just like a cool experience, I guess, and it was exciting to win.
How long have you been dancing?
Since I was three.
Whoa, really?
Yeah.
Now, some people's, what's the difference, is there any, between dancing and athleticism or athletics? Or are they really all the same?
They're all the same, and like, it's really hard, too.
It is.
Yeah.
Have you yet to choreograph a routine?
Like, for football games, like, we all get in a little group and we help out, so like, we all contribute to like the football game choreography stuff.
Cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was great.
Yeah.
Coach loves you, Carly. And we're very proud of you, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Well, Julia Sabrino could not join us this evening.
She's here.
Kinsey Sheridan, where's Kinsey?
Here.
How are ya?
Good, how are you?
Do all the freshmen sit in the front row?
Yeah.
That's a great name, Kinsey.
Thank you.
Is it a family name?
No.
No? Are you named after the street?
No.
You know that street in Chicago? Brothers and sisters, Kinsey?
I have two younger sisters.
Again, you're blazing the trail.
Yep.
So a freshman, state champion. What else do you do?
Uh, pretty much just dance.
Really? So lots of talents. What's your favorite subject?
Uh, science.
Really? Cool. Ultimately, what do you wanna do with your science degree? If you get a science degree?
I don't know. No.
No? You know, high school is kind of a waste. Who's your favorite science teacher?
I don't, I don't know, I don't really have one.
Do you know Mr. Gannon?
No.
He's not my favorite either. Who's your favorite principal?
Mr. Rogers.
Well done. Being televised, nice job. No detentions for you, Kinsey. Excellent. Mom and dad here tonight?
Yeah, my mom is.
Where's mom? There she is. Awesome. Must be very proud.
Definitely.
It's pretty cool. Anything else you wanna share with us, Kinsey?
No.
You sure? The microphone's yours, the floor is yours.
I'm sure.
You're sure? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Nikki Sarah, where is she? Nikki, why didn't your mom bring pizza?
I don't know.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. Now Nikki, tell us about yourself, what grade are you in?
I'm a sophomore.
Sophomore. So far, so good.
Yeah.
You made it through freshman year, any advice for these young ladies?
Freshman year matters.
Sounds like something your mom said to you.
She does.
And I know you have older siblings.
Yes.
And what are they up to? Your sister just transferred college, didn't she?
Yes, yeah, they're both just college.
Just doing the college thing.
Yeah.
And your sister went to Miami of Ohio, correct?
Yes.
That's pretty cool. So, two years dancing now and two state championships.
Yes.
You gonna three-peat it?
I hope so.
You gonna be back, coach?
Yes.
Yeah? Cool. What else do we need to know? Half-off pizza tonight? Do you know why I say that, folks? Do you know the Sarah family? They own this little joint in town called Orellillos. Is it half-off tonight? If we came in, would it be half-off tonight?
Yes.
Who are you rooting for tonight in the basketball game? Anyone?
I was rooting for Kentucky, but I'll probably go for Duke. Yeah.
Commander, arrest her. The commander's a huge Wisconsin fan.
Sorry.
So is Jason. Can we have your license plate?
Wait, what?
Who needs red light cameras? Nikki, that's for you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Come on up. Where's dad?
He's at home.
Is he?
He had to fix my car. It was, it broke down. He was trying to get it to start.
Is mom here?
Yeah, she's here.
I'm here.
Your dad's always working, too, for god's sake.
Oh, yeah.
Are you a sophomore, Dana?
Junior.
Junior?
I'm a sophomore.
Only one, oh, good, makes it easy. You taken the ACT already?
Yeah, we just took it.
You just took it?
Well, no, like, a couple weeks ago, so not just took it, but just took it.
That's enough. How do you think you did?
All right.
What's your goal score? What do you hope to achieve?
Oh...
Thirty-six.
Yeah, thirty-six, definitely, thirty-six. No, I don't know.
Several kids last year got thirty-six or something from Geneva.
Oh, I believe it, yeah.
True story, what do you think I got on my ACT? True story, I'll answer it truthfully.
Truthfully? Hmm, twenty-nine.
Half that.
That's good.
I got a fourteen the first time. Not a good situation. I thought it was like golf, I thought, this is cool. That I got a full ride to the St. Charles Boys, so... What's your favorite subject?
Um, English.
Is that a question or a statement?
I had to think about it, English.
Who's your English teacher?
Mrs. Temple.
Ah, okay. Ultimately, what do you wanna do with your life?
Hmm...
To be determined? Not sure yet?
I don't...
Hang out with dad at the bar at Orellillos?
No. I wanna leave.
Where do you wanna go? Where do you wanna go to school? Have you thought about that yet?
Kind of, but not really. Somewhere far.
How's it going, mom?
Arizona.
Did you really?
I would like to.
It's a warm climate?
Yeah.
Get out of this nonsense?
Depends on if I wanna dance or not.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Now, do they offer scholarships for dance at the collegiate level?
Not really.
Not really?
No.
Well, we're proud of you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being so talkative. Say hi to dad.
I will, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Elena Kramer could not make it this evening. Ooh, neither could my least favorite niece, Maddie Emma. Where is she?
Working. Neither can Maddie. She's here.
Yay, Nicole Rennie. How are you, Nicole?
Good, how are you?
Good, welcome. Junior?
Yes.
Awesome. How did the ACT go?
Good, I've taken it twice now.
Why? Where do you take it? Do you take it at the school?
Um, I did, actually, the first time I took was at Geneva, too.
So you took it again because you just, you already got your score back? Or you wanted just to take it again?
Well, the first time I took it, and then we had to take it the second time for school.
So you're like one of those 4.0 GPA people?
No.
She's really smart.
Yeah? What's your goal score on that sucker?
Thirties.
Thirties? And the whole world opens up to you, doesn't it?
Yeah.
And ultimately, what do you wanna do? Go to school and study?
Uh, probably something in engineering or actual science.
Ooh, actual sciences?
Yeah.
Do you know Maddie Emma?
Yeah, her dad does.
Her father's in action.
Yeah, yeah.
Apparently so important, they couldn't even hit you. I hope they're watching this. Is your mom and dad here?
No.
No? Brothers and sisters?
Oh, you have a twin brother and a sister.
You do?
Yeah.
Quarterback at Geneva.
Oh, no kidding? I don't really follow the football team.
Just the dances.
Just the dances, yeah, you know. Wow.
The big sports.
The big sports, absolutely. Well, that's pretty cool. Anything else we should know about you?
No.
Who are you rooting for tonight, anyone?
Duke. Well, I wanted Kentucky to win, Wisconsin beat them, so...
Why do you want Kentucky, though, really?
Because then I would've won money. It's all about the brackets.
This is all on TV, it's all about the brackets, isn't it?
Yes.
Thank you very much, congratulations. Olivia Soltis.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm good.
Do I hazard a guess, freshman?
No, junior.
Well, I was thinking the front row, I just took a stab, junior.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So you have two state championships.
Oh, one, this is my first year.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
So how many ladies try out for the dance team?
A lot.
A lot?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. And why, what inspired you to try out this year?
Um, well, I like moved here, I guess, and then I tried out this year.
Where'd you move from?
Mount Zion, Illinois.
No kidding?
Yeah.
What brought you here? Mom and dad's job kinda thing, or?
Yeah.
Or just the coach of the dance team?
Right. Pretty much, yeah.
So you thought, let's do something, let's try out for dance, and...
Yeah.
Well, that's pretty cool. And you obviously had a great experience.
Yeah, it was fun.
That's awesome. And how's Geneva High School treating you?
Uh, good.
Good?
Yeah.
And you took the ACT?
Yeah, I did.
It's gotta be harder these days, don't you think?
Probably. Yeah.
Do you have family here supporting you tonight?
Uh, yeah, my mom and dad.
Yeah, look at that. So how's Geneva treating you guys? Good? Uh-oh. You didn't comment during the budget, did you? Brothers and sisters?
I have a younger brother.
How old's he?
Uh, fifteen? Or no, sixteen.
Ah.
Yeah.
What else? Anything else you wanna share?
No.
TV's on?
No.
This is your chance?
No.
Do you like the Deans?
What?
What?
Yes.
What?
Yes, yes, yes.
Congratulations, Olivia.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gabrielle Weron, where are you? There you are.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good to see ya.
You, too.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So what do we need to know about you, Gabrielle?
Um, I don't know.
Besides your champion dancer?
I don't know.
There's gotta be something.
I'm a junior, uh, I don't know. Like the color blue, I don't know.
Is there, is there anyone here embarrassed by you? I mean, supporting you tonight?
Uh, maybe.
Who's here?
My mom and my dad.
Oh, she's filming this.
Yes.
This will be on channel ten four times every day for the rest of the week, by the way. Do you have brothers and sisters, Gabrielle?
Yes, I have a younger sister.
You do? How old's she?
She's fifteen.
So...
She's a sophomore.
Sophomore.
Yeah.
And is she a dancer as well?
No, she plays soccer.
Oh, she does?
Mm-hmm.
So you have totally separate interests?
Yeah.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah, so it's fun.
That makes it easy. And how was the ACT?
It was good, I hope.
You hope?
Yeah, I haven't gotten them back.
When do you get the scores back?
I don't know, just waiting. Yeah.
And they just send it electronically now, right? They don't...
I don't know.
Post them like the colonial?
Mail, maybe.
They never do. What do you wanna do when you head to school?
Um, I'm thinking about business, so...
Is there a particular school in mind?
Um, I like Kansas and Miami of Ohio.
Ooh, Miami of Ohio.
Mm-hmm, so, yeah.
Kansas is cool.
Sister.
In fact, I think, uh, doesn't Maddie's brothers go to Kansas? Yeah, that's what I thought.
Kansas State.
Kansas State, oh, yeah. My nephew goes to Kansas.
Oh, good.
Ted Cascaden.
Does he like it?
We don't talk.
Oh, okay.
He does, he loves it.
Okay.
He loves it.
Good.
Anything else, Gabrielle? Is it a family name, Gabrielle?
No, just names parents liked, so...
Do they call you Gabby or Gabrielle?
Gabrielle.
If you're in trouble, do they call you Gabby?
No.
You've never been in trouble?
No.
Not good? No? Awesome, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie couldn't make it. Gigi Hanson. Gigi, you're the one who retweeted my tweet.
Yep, that was me.
That was you. Is yours with the picture of all the ladies like in front of a barn?
Yeah, that's my team.
Okay, that's you, okay. There was a young lady years ago, I know the dean will remember, Gigi Garvey, remember her? She played basketball for Geneva? That's the only, is your name, Gigi?
Gianna.
It is Gianna, okay.
Yes.
And what grade are you in?
I'm a senior.
Whoa, really?
Yeah.
What are your plans next year?
I'm going to University of Iowa.
Familiar with that, dean?
Good choice.
Thank you.
What do you wanna study there?
Elementary education.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that's cool. Why'd you choose Iowa?
Um, it's a perfect distance from home, they have a really good education program. I got direct admit, so that's big.
You got a who, what, where?
Direct admit into the education program.
Oh, no kidding?
Mm-hmm.
So you're smart, and you just come on in.
I'd like to think so.
Oh, yeah? Do you know where you're gonna live yet, or it's too early?
Not yet.
Okay. But you'll probably live in a dorm freshman year?
Yes.
You have to?
Yeah.
You do, okay. Who else is gonna go to Iowa from Geneva? I would assume a lot of kids, right?
Not that many this year.
Not this year, huh?
No.
Wow, that's wild, man. Is that your brother, Jason?
It is.
Hmm. Kid's impatient, isn't he? We got forty minutes still, Jason. Hang in there, buddy. So who are you rooting for tonight, Gigi?
Wisconsin.
Why?
Um, that was my dream school for a while.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Too long of a word to spell. Iowa's better?
Yeah.
Absolutely. What else? What else we need to know about you?
Um, I like bike rides.
Do you?
Yes.
Are you gonna go on the senior bike ride this year?
Oh, for sure.
Are ya? Who's your English teacher?
Mr. Burns.
Ooh, funny. He's probably watching. He doesn't have much of a social life. Anything else?
No.
You're a senior, man, you get all the time you want.
Um, thank you, team, thank you, coach.
So you have two championships under your belt?
Yes.
That's awesome. Do you wanna do anything at Iowa? Or just focus on studies and enjoy the...
Focus on studies.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very cool. Iowa City's a great place. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Jason, you're wrong, your sister's awesome, man. Jenna Soldati.
Hi. Yeah.
What grade are you in?
I'm a senior.
You are? And what are your plans next year?
I'm going to University of Illinois. I'm double majoring dance and psychology.
Dance and psychology?
I wanna go into dance therapy.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Forgive me for my ignorance, but what is dance therapy?
Um, dance therapy, it's in the umbrella of like expressive therapy, so like along the lines of music therapy and art therapy, where it's people who don't have a voice giving them, using dance as a form of expression to help them.
What do you think of that?
Pretty impressed.
It is. Do you have brothers and sisters?
I have two older brothers.
Did they go to Illinois as well?
No, my oldest brother went to Berkeley in Boston for music, and then my middle brother is currently a junior at North Central.
No kidding?
For art.
For art. So what instrument do you play?
I play piano and sing.
You do?
Mm-hmm.
And how long have you played the piano?
I started when I was five.
Do you play the piano while dancing?
I haven't mastered that yet, I'm working on it.
That could be your ticket.
I'm working on it.
I love it. So who's here supporting you tonight?
My mom.
Where's mom? Oh, hey, mom.
Hi.
That's very impressive.
Thank you.
Now, do you always know about this, the music dance therapy, or was it something that you were introduced to recently?
It's a very new field, like, there is no undergraduate program for it in any college, which is why I was doing the dance and psychology, double major.
So you're doing what?
The dance and psych...
Yeah, sure.
Um, so there's no undergraduate program for it anywhere, and currently there's only five graduate programs for it.
Oh, wow.
So that's why U of I, their dance program's actually the only dance program with a track that goes into dance therapy.
So is it undergrad then grad, or is it a combined, like...
It's just undergrad, but then I'm gonna go get my masters afterwards.
That's cool. Wow.
I'll be poor.
We all, no, you won't, mom will pay for everything, don't worry about it. Did she give you the credit card yet?
No.
Do you want the city's?
Sure.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Pretty cool. Do you wanna hold the ladies up to unveil?
Thank you.
Please.
Come up.
Okay, ladies, this is a picture of Maddie Emma. Couldn't make it tonight.
Just her face.
You guys come on up here and surround this.
Just her face.
You guys do the honors, man, you guys...
I know. Oh, boy.
Ready, coach? You guys listen to the coach, will ya? Whenever you're ready, coach, you... I listen to the coach.
One, two.
Notice how we squeezed the 2015 in? Hmm, that's awesome.
Twenty-fifth.
And, yeah, the ampersand. You English people know what that means. Now, where would you like this displayed in town? Thank you for the... What?
Yeah.
We could put it behind the 7-Eleven. Well, this is in honor of your extraordinary contribution, and I think as your coach said as well, you guys are extraordinary ambassadors for the city, and we thank you for that especially. So thank you very much.
I know they're quiet tonight for some reason, but they're not.
Social media will be exploding later.
Oh, yeah.
That's awesome. Moms and dads, you guys get a good shot of that?
I got a good shot.
Yeah, if you guys wanna get a group shot, go for it.
I was gonna throw it on you.
Wow. I like the red. Chalk this, man.
Mom, you have to cancel.
Too bad. Congratulations, ladies. Thought you guys could see better and enjoy this one.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good to see you guys.
Thank you.
Be good.
Got quite a few of those.
Now, if you guys wanna sneak out before it gets really interesting, feel free, I understand, so... I'll sit there, throw it on you.
Wow.
I like the old colors. Congratulations, ladies. Thought you guys could see better, enjoy this one now. Thank you, good to see you guys. I'll get one too. Be good. Now, if you guys wanna sneak out before it gets really interesting, feel free, I understand, so... We'll see you in the Orellos. Thank you. Thank you. I should probably move that, shouldn't I? That's right, I forgot about that. Thank you, Chuck. Mr. Babica, has it really been seven months?
Yes, sir.
Isn't it amazing? Item 3D is consider the mayor's appointment of Rich Babica to Director of Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Marks, seconded by Cummings. Questions or comments from Mr. Babica, or curiosities? We had a nice day today, didn't we?
Yes, we did. Lovely day for a walk in the park.
Lovely day for a walk in the park. Voice vote sufficient, Mr. City Attorney? Roll call is even better, Mr. City Clerk. Roll call, please.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simmonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Congratulations, sir. Thank you very much. You got the dogs fed and everything, Rich?
Excuse me, sir? I'm not listening to you, I've been appointed, I'm...
Sound like Commander Nash. Item E is to proclaim April 7th, 2015, that's tomorrow, as National Service Recognition Day. We have a very special guest with us tonight from the Northern Illinois Food Bank. Please, come on up and say hello to the team. And I will be joining, I know Mayor Pineda of West Chicago tomorrow, hanging out at the food bank and packing up some goodies and...
Yes, and we have a couple other mayors joining us.
Oh, yeah, who else?
Um...
For security reasons.
Mayor from North Aurora and also St. Charles.
Oh, good, Rogina and Burnham, awesome, man. Cool, and what's your name?
I'm Joanna MacDillino, and I, um, started work, started at the, the food bank back in August as an AmeriCorps Vista member.
And where are you from?
I'm from Schaumburg, um, but I am familiar with the Northwest, West suburbs.
Now, as an AmeriCorps Vista volunteer, are you able to choose the location, or you pretty much jump into a pool and it's, here's what we need you?
Um, you can apply for a targeted AmeriCorps program, and it's, uh, for those of you that aren't familiar, it's part of corporation, the Corporation for National and Community Service, and AmeriCorps Vista is a subcategory of that. And so I specifically chose to apply to this program and was accepted. Um, but you can, there's numerous programs across the nation that you can apply for in different areas. Um, the AmeriCorps Vista program's ultimate goal is to, um, through capacity building and different forms of resource development to work towards eliminating poverty.
Now, where did you attend school?
I, um, graduated from DePaul University.
You did? Did you live downtown?
Yes, for part of that time.
Our new Director of Public Works is a DePaul alum.
Okay.
So, yeah, he also did not play basketball for them. So what did you study at DePaul?
I studied geography.
Geography?
I studied geography, um, more so the cultural geography and GIS, and, um, focused on like environmental policy and urban planning.
Oh, no kidding?
Mm-hmm.
That's pretty cool. Someday you aspire law school, or...
I'm looking at different avenues of being able to combine like the government and nonprofit.
Now, we're all familiar with the food bank. What's, give us a statistic that would be both inspiring and perhaps a little bit shocking.
Um, we serve seventy-one thousand people each week through both our food pantries and feeing programs. Um, and that includes senior box programs, backpack programs, and child after-school snack programs. And then another, um, instru- interesting fact and way, um, your, our support's dollars are spent is for every dollar donated, we're able to provide eight dollars worth of groceries.
Is, is that above the national average, or is that pretty head-on? In terms of how you turn that one dollar into eight?
Um...
That's pretty impressive.
Yeah, offhand, I'm not sure exactly how it compares to the whole, whole nation, but it's definitely through our different departments and donations and partnerships we have.
And how's the fundraising going generally?
Good.
Pretty good?
Mm-hmm.
Rich Markshur's a huge donor.
Thank you.
Our company has spent tons.
Oh, I know, I know, that's awesome, man. Well, I'm looking forward to tomorrow. And I do have the proclamation for you, it's been signed and everything. May I present this to you?
Yes.
Awesome.
Can I wear a suit tomorrow, or should I dress more casual?
Um, whatever you're comfortable with, but definitely casual, it's fine, too.
You might be sending your suit.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
See you tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay. No open-toe shoes, George?
That's right.
No, no open-toe shoes.
See you tomorrow, it's gonna be fun.
Yes.
Looking forward to it. Item 4, amendments to the agenda, are there any amendments this evening?
We got, um, oh, we never...
Oh, well, actually, we had a motion and a second, all in favor of proclaiming April 7th. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Get a motion or a second.
So moved.
We didn't?
Second, we did now.
We did now. Motion by Bruno, seconded by Flanagan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Amendments to the agenda, are there any amendments this evening from the council? Item 5 is the omnibus agenda, all items marked with an asterisk can be considered as routine and can be enacted with one motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove, uh, item 6 from the omnibus agenda, please.
Item 6.
Which one?
Anyone else want to remove or amend? Would you like to offer a motion to amend the omnibus agenda?
So moved.
Or approved as amended? Bruno makes the motion, is there a second?
What is it?
Seconded by Brown. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Now a roll call on the main motion as amended, correct?
Well, you could've just taken them.
Oh, take them, okay.
Removal's automatic.
Okay. Roll call, roll call vote to approve the omnibus as amended.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simmonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
We jumped down to item 6, Alderman Bruno, the floor is yours.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, under, on, uh, let's see, I believe it is page fifteen in our packet, under motion to table, uh, if a citation could be added that I, uh, I also cited that there were no time-sensitive projects involved.
Do you note those suggested changes, Mr. Clerk? Do you? Would you like to offer a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Text.
Seconded by Sino? Any additional questions or comments? A voice vote sufficient, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We jumped down to item number 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in aggregate for our consideration.
Bills for payment, total seven hundred and thirteen thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-three cents.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual invoices that add up to that total can be found in the packet on the city's website for tonight's meeting.
Second.
Alderman Brown makes the motion to pay the bills as presented. Alderman Flanagan makes the second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marks?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simmonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We skipped down to a committee of the whole items of business. Item 11A is to recommend Resolution Number 2015-30, adopting the fiscal year 2015-2016 budget.
So moved.
Second.
Marks makes the motion, and Singer makes the second. Any questions or comments from the council? Alderman Simmonian?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is my second go-round with this budget process. I didn't feel real comfortable with the first one, but it was my first one, so I played spectator. I don't know how comfortable I am with the second one, quite honestly. But what I do, uh, want to address is not necessarily the budget tonight, but moving forward with some thoughts and some suggestions. Uh, because of where this lovely state of ours is going, I think we have to be extremely proactive in where we take this journey, this financial journey, moving forward. And I wrote down some thoughts, if you bear with me, because, uh, if I don't write them down, I, I go all over the place. First of all, the facts. The Illinois Municipal League distributed a report to local government consolidation and unfunded mandates task force. In that report, it lists the mandates, it's broken out by statute, public acts, and general impact, that the mandate will have. The mandates are broken down into nine categories. Those categories are pensions, property taxes, sales taxes, pu- public records and meetings, labor relations, municipalities, finances, health insurance, and environmental protection. Under pensions, the hundred and sixteen mandates, all hundred and sixteen will increase employer costs, and employer meaning the city of Geneva. Not all hundred and sixteen relate to the city of Geneva, but these are the mandates throughout the state. Property taxes, forty-two different mandates, thirty-nine will generate a revenue loss, three will create an extra cost. Sales taxes, four will generate a revenue loss, one will create an extra cost. Public records and meetings, seven will create extra costs, one will restrict the ability to offset costs. Labor relations, all fourteen will increase costs. Municipalities of, uh, which is thirty, thirty-nine statutes, or thirty-nine mandates, all thirty-nine will increase costs. Finances, uh, four, all four will increase costs. Health insurance, there's two mandates, both will increase costs. Environmental protection, which is twenty-four, twenty-three will increase costs, one will generate a revenue loss. These are all what they call unfunded mandates, meaning Springfield, uh, passes them and we have to pay for them. So many of these unfunded mandates are limiting the control of our local government here, uh, has over our own budgets and our budgeting process. Some additional facts about our budget. Our general fund for 2016, the emergency reserve balance has been reduced twenty-three, to twenty-three percent or eighty-four operating days. Our city policy is to be at twenty-five percent or ninety days. From, as of 2007, 2008, we've reduced our full-time staff from a hundred and fifty-seven to a current level of a hundred and forty-three. Our general fund will be a little over a million dollars less than it was in 2008 and 2009, which we were in a thick of the worst, one of the worst recessions, or if some have said a depression. Our 2015-16 budget, forty-three percent of the revenue to Geneva will be impacted in a negative way. Uh, sixty-five percent of our expenses in 2015-2016 go to police and fire, forty percent police, twenty-five percent fire. Our debt to revenue ratio for water, wastewater runs at twenty percent. Um, in fiscal year '08, we had nineteen percent of our employees as part of a union. In 2016, we have fifty-five percent. Our police pension contribution this year is 1.454 million, of which the police contribute 310,000, and taxpayers contribute 1.144. Fire pension contribute, uh, contributions, 531,000, of which, uh, fire contributed 175,000, and the taxpayers contribute 355. And before anybody calls or writes or jumps on me for unions, I grew up in a union family. My dad was a union president. He was in the pipe fitter, union local number four, for almost forty years. My eighty-six-year-old mother receives a $951.36 check every month as a result of pensions. I have no, no issues with unions, I have horrible issues with how the unions are funded. And I don't think taxpayer dollars should be part of that, but that's something we don't have any control over. Um, overtime pay for police in 2014 is 256,000, for fire, it's 176,000. Uh, a lot of this is reimbursable, and some of it is in-kind services, so that number is really not, uh, reflective. And since Springfield does not allow us to structure ourselves in a way that best meets our needs with regards to our budgets, taxpayers, and public employees, I believe we need to adjust accordingly. Already this year, several bills have been introduced that would impose further restrictions on the ability of local governments to even capture basic inflationary increases through property taxes. None of these bills would reduce the many state imposed property tax cost drivers. Rather, they'd only increase local government burdens or debt by making it more difficult for local governments to pay for costs imposed by the state mandates. I want, at this time, to piggyback our city administrator McKittrick's budget presentation a few weeks ago that she titled "The New Normal." In my opinion, the state of Illinois's financial condition is at best a disaster. In all likelihood, those communities that rely on doing things the way they have always been done are destined for the same financial disaster. Also, in my opinion, we cannot continue to deplete such funds as our emergency reserves or capital budgets to fund the mandates and increased costs being dumped on us from Springfield. We have a responsibility to our constituents and taxpayers of Geneva to be willing to start with a blank sheet of paper, if need be, and if need be redesign how we do things to secure our financial footing as a city moving into the future. To date, city administrator McKittrick and the city staff have done a great job of securing those financial footings. Moving forward, though, I believe we as a governing body need to set the policy and direction for city administrator McKittrick and the city staff to prepare as best we can for this very, very choppy financial journey that's ahead of us due to the state's fiscal irresponsibility for the many past decades. To give you an example of how I think we should look to the future is right here with us, uh, with the kind of outside-of-the-box thinking, uh, in development of things like TRICOM and Tri-City Ambulance, where Batavia, St. Charles, and Geneva worked collaboratively on a system that provides, uh, that has saved a tremendous amount of taxpayer dollars. that provides, that has saved a tremendous amount of taxpayer dollars. It's completely outsourced, and it provides a tremendous service. I think we need to change our mentality to become the leaders of change moving forward and not follow the status quo as to, well, St. Charles is doing it, or Batavia is doing it, or so-and-so else is doing it. I think this out-of-the-box thinking that created the whole Tri-City Ambulance scenario is a perfect example. And I think it's going to be uncomfortable subject matter, as well as I think it's, but it needs to be, and we need to address every issue. Things such as, should we create a fire district instead of the status quo? Should we create a police district? Can we outsource services to a third party? Should we be using outside specialists, like a law firm in union negotiations versus city staff? Can we combine city services with neighboring cities? Should we continue to adopt and fund an effective succession planning process? And should we look at reducing our services and service levels to our citizens? These are just a few of the many ideas that I believe city council, city staff, and residents of Geneva can come up with. None of these may ever come to fruition, but I'm not one to look back and say, I wish we had done it. I'd like to see if we can't start the process now. I believe there's a financial tsunami on its way towards Illinois. In either case, being hit by it or preparing to avoid it, it's going to take some hard decisions and choices. I'm sharing this information and my thoughts, opinions with my fellow aldermen and alderwomen to see if I can get your support to include these discussions in both our next fifth Monday policy meetings and on the agenda during our November strategic planning meeting, or any other ideas you may have to address these concerns I've shared with you tonight. You may also say I'm nuts. You won't be the first, and you won't be the last, but I just want to thank you for taking your time and bearing with me as I fill my soapbox quota for April. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Maladra.
I don't say you're nuts. I mean, not about that. I think that there's a lot that we have to talk about, but I will say that anybody here who's already drawn a conclusion about any of these matters, that person is nuts. The discussion has to be frank, it has to be fact-based, rational, and it'll be a good discussion wherever it leads. I know Tom believes that, too. I just want to be clear that what we're after is talking about different ways to do things. It's not insisting that this is the right way to do things or the wrong way. It's a discussion. Fair enough?
I totally agree. I just think we need to just start talking.
Right.
You know, maybe a year, or two, or three before anything ever gets done, if anything gets done. But I think we have to start now, because I don't see good things on the horizon.
The other thing I would like to add to it is, we have to do what's within our control. One of the things we have to recognize is that what's within our control is this whole idea of who Springfield is. If I understood some of the email that I saw on unfunded mandates, some of our own local representatives sponsored a few of these unfunded mandates. So we have to start educating ourselves, we have to start educating our constituents who vote for these people about the ramifications of their actions. So it's taking control of what we can do immediately, and by that I don't mean time-wise, I mean closeness, but it's also using whatever influence we have on Springfield. We have to be a lot more active in that than I think we have ever been. Now who's nuts?
Anyone else on the dais?
I think they're good ideas. I think it should be a frank discussion, and you're right, we shouldn't come in with preconceived notions. I think it's worthwhile to work with the staff and come up with ideas, and let's see where we go. I don't know if a fifth Monday is enough, or if we should have some type of a workshop to really work on it, Mayor. I mean, it's more of your decision. You know, I mean, you may want to have a committee start looking at it with citizens involved also. I mean, those options are out there. I think the council needs to probably work at it first to come up with some ideas and float it, but I think, you know, I think Tom is right here. I think we probably need to get ahead of this instead of behind it, and the cities who do get ahead of this are probably going to be the ones that survive. And you know what? We've had a good track record of staying ahead of some of this stuff, and I think we need to keep doing it.
Anyone else? Before I recognize city administrator from the dais, anyone else? Mrs. McKittrick.
I was just going to suggest that relative to the suggestion about looking at consolidation, I believe is one of the points that you were making. That model is out there. There have been a lot of other communities in Illinois that have looked into that, so the research is there. And it's different, obviously, for different communities, but besides putting out an RFQ for qualifications to have a study done, we could look to other communities to see what they've found to start with, I think is a good starting point. If I also might suggest, I'm going to Springfield on April 19th and 20th. I would encourage each and every one of you to join me in that trip, to talk with the governor and the legislators, to try to convince them that these unfunded mandates are not helpful, and to give them actual dollars and cents as it applies to our community in how it takes away from services to our citizens. So those two steps might be a good start in looking into these things. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone from the audience? Thank you. Moving on. Why not moving on to the vote?
Is this voice, or a roll call?
I usually whisper that, actually. This is a roll call vote, of course. Any additional questions or comments regarding the budget for consideration? Mr. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Don Cummings.
Aye.
Earthie Flanagan.
Aye.
Dean Kilberg.
Aye.
Frank Maladra.
Aye.
Richard Marks.
Aye.
Mary Sino.
Aye.
Tom Simonian.
Aye.
Don Singer.
Aye.
Chuck Brown.
Aye.
Mike Bruno.
Aye.
Item 11A passes unanimously. According to my scorecard, we jump down to item 13, new business. I know we have one gentleman here who would like to share with us some thoughts. Mr. Bocky, welcome, sir, and thanks for your patience. And if I could trouble you when you join us at the podium to share your name and spell your last name and your address.
Sure.
And your social security number and the.
Frank Bocky, B as in boy, O-C-H-T-E, 1918 Williamsburg Avenue in Geneva.
Welcome.
Thank you. No, a issue that I wanted to bring up, I actually have been thinking about it all winter, but I figured now that we're into spring, it's a little less ominous to bring this up, but I think the time has come to bring it up, because when I switched careers about a year and a half ago, I began commuting to downtown through the railway here, and I've noticed almost since I've been commuting that there's been a couple of individuals who seem to be confusing our wonderful Geneva train station with a homeless shelter. And I've been noticing, as time has gone on, it's a mother and son. I've talked to our city administrator and the police commander this afternoon or this evening, and they're, of course, aware of it. I'm just bringing this up as a concerned citizen, because I have witnessed recently more and more confrontations between commuters who I don't think understand what they're dealing with when they confront these two individuals. I believe the mother is somewhat docile, she's in her 50s, but the son, I've seen him lash out, and he can become quite confrontational without notice. So, you know, I'm not coming here from a, you know, let's throw them in the clink and punish them. I mean, these are two individuals that need help. I think they're known to a lot of people in the community. They clearly have problems. I don't think our community, I think our community is known as a compassionate community, and I think to be compassionate, we should not turn our backs on these two individuals and just pretend they don't exist, which I think that seems to be the position of the railroad, I'll get into that in a second, but I think we can do better than that. I think these individuals need our help, and quite frankly, I think they need our help before they hurt somebody or cause an incident. In the last few weeks, I brought this up with the train ticket clerk. She's a nice woman, but she immediately pointed fingers at Mr. Shodine, who owns the property. I've talked with the Shodine people, and they said, that is clearly not the case. Not only do they not own that portion of the building, that portion of the building actually is owned by the railroad, but they said even if they were a tenant, it is still their responsibility to enforce the trespassing and loitering laws that currently exist. For whatever reason, this ticket clerk, I talked to her this morning, I mean, I wasn't going to come here until this morning, because I was so upset by the response I got today from the ticket clerk. Basically, she's saying, they're not hurting anyone, it's not my problem. And I'm saying, well, you know, that's not really the issue. The issue is, is that our train station is not a homeless shelter. I was willing to let it go through the winter as a warming, you know, a warming shelter. We're past the sub-zero temperature days, at least I hope. And I think it's time for maybe someone in the city to put pressure on the railroad to start allowing our police department to enforce the laws. Unfortunately, the police department could only go so far if the person in the clerk's office there refuses to sign a complaint. So we're kind of at a standoff right now, but I do hope that something can be done to address this problem, because again, the mother, I'm not so concerned about, the son, though, is going to explode, and I think there's going to be problems. He's not a, and if anybody, I don't, if anybody has seen these individuals, they're there right now. I drove by, wait, before I came here, they're there 24/7. The easiest solution, and I talked to our city administrator, would be for the ticket clerk to lock the doors, like the way the train station used to be locked at night. There's no reason for that station to be open 24/7 when the weather is warm. I think that's the easiest solution, but whatever solutions anyone else has, I'm sure would be welcome.
Mr. Bocky, would you object if city administrator provided an update for the benefit of the entire council and all those watching regarding this particular issue?
I'd welcome that.
Okay. Mary, would you mind providing that summary that you and I discussed earlier?
I'd be happy to. I spoke today with Shodine management and with Metro representatives. I also sent emails to Metro, Shodine, and Union Pacific representatives, asking them for permission, if you will, in writing to our police department to remove these individuals at the request of the property owners. The unit where the ticket office is located is owned by Metro. The employee inside the ticket office is a Union Pacific employee. The rest of the building is owned by Shodine management. So it's a little bit complicated as to who is on first, so to speak. But pursuant to my discussions with our police chief and getting his advice, I requested that the property owners, all three of them, send a letter to our police department requesting that anyone, including these folks, or anyone taking up residency or loitering, not using the facility for the purpose that was intended, be asked to leave. We've already received a letter from Shodine management stating the same. I'm waiting for something at this point from Metro and from Union Pacific, and hopefully we will receive that. Upon receipt of those letters, our police department will go on to this private property and instruct those individuals to vacate the property. At this point, we've not been able to do that, because it is private property, and we've not been asked for assistance by the property owners. So we're hoping to work with them. At the same time, simultaneously, as the mayor indicated, we will continue to reach out to these folks and offer assistance through our advocacy program and trying to get them the resources that they need. Obviously, we can't force that on them, but we will continue to try to do that. And I shared my contact information with Mr. Bocky tonight and suggested that he give me a call at any time to get a status report on where we are, and we'll keep working on it, and hopefully we'll make some progress working together with the property owners.
Yeah, I think the simplest solution is they'll just lock, when she leaves at 10:00 in the morning, which I think is when she leaves, just lock the station, which is the way it always used to be.
Right.
There's no reason for the station to be open if there's no one there, you know.
And that suggestion was made also to Union Pacific to direct their employee to do that. You know, we don't know what their policy is, but they own some of the property in the station area. Metro owns the ticket office, Shodine owns the rest of the building. So if we can get those three entities to agree that loitering and establishing residency when it's not supposed to be there is prohibited, you know, then our police department will have the authority to take care of the problem.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good to see you, Frank.
Good to see you. Bye-bye.
How's that commute treating you?
It's good.
Mr. Baker. Excuse me, Sergeant Baker, excuse me.
I wanted to come in and speak on a new business, and this has to do with a application at conversation, conversation with the mayor and the city manager earlier last month. And the reason why I'm here today is I'm a 30-year member of the Geneva Police Department. It was listening to your conversation, sir, regarding the issues regarding pensions and stuff, and this is what I wanted to talk about tonight to bring this up, is I worked for the city of Geneva for 30 years. I was, about four years ago, I was talking to Ken Hutton, who was a community service officer with the city of Geneva. He talked about his issue of coming up to retirement. We started talking, and it planted the idea in my head about, after serving the city for however many years I would serve, maybe applying for a job with the city as a community service officer. I spoke with my city, or the Police Department Administration over the last year and a half regarding that, asking what did I need to do for that, and I was, they said I would be a very good choice for that, because it's a very good lead-in for my 30 years on the department to my, doing the community service job. I'm one of those people where if you ever see me at Swedish Days or Festival of Vine, if I'm holding a sign-up directing traffic, people ask me, what is a sergeant doing there? And I say, I'm putting my kids through college, because that's what my goal is. That's my daughter back there, and my wife back there, and my son is at a football workout right now. Between the four of us, we have about 100 years of residency here in Geneva. And the reason why I am interested in this position, and I reached out to the police department to make sure I was qualified for that, I spoke with them. They said, Timmy, you're the perfect person for the job. They had a meeting with Mary McKittrick, and then I got called up to the office, and I was told you are not allowed to apply for the job. I asked, well, I was, I think I said three words in that meeting with the chief and the two commanders, and from that point on, I just left the room and I started thinking about it. I asked to speak with the mayor and the city manager, I talked to the chief about that. We had the mayor and I, and let the fire trucks go by. I spoke with the mayor first, and I explained to him that there's a tremendous salary savings, because I knew once I heard no, that I wasn't going to be considered for the job. I knew that I had to find out, just to show that this is a win-win situation for both the city and Tim Baker and his family. And what I did is, I'm going to ask my wife to, or my daughter to pass this out, is I presented to the mayor and Mary McKittrick, there's about 160,000 to 180,000 dollar savings over three years in salary for the position, because the top-end sergeant, the top-end sergeant salary is here, the starting sergeant salary is here, the top-end patrolman salary to a starting patrolman salary, and then down the road for the community service officer. Just the salary savings on the first year is about $50,000. And I know sometimes the city doesn't hire right away, depending on the fact that if there's a police opening or a police academy position available, depending if it's a six-month delay or a three-month delay, or an entire year delay, the possibility is about somewhere around $118,000 in salary savings. I was asked not to take too much time regarding all this, but the reason why I brought that up in the money situation is because I know the governor has talked about cutting money from the city, between a million and a half million dollars. This idea of me applying for the job was, I looked at the job description, and the job description was, need a driver's license, a high school diploma, US citizen, be able to pass the background investigation, and drug tests, are very basic conditions for employment. I was told I wouldn't be allowed to apply for the job, once the, and that was the internal, even though the city policy, if you can bear with me, the city policy says that the following guideline should be taken in the selection and recruitment process. Notifications that be made to the Human Resource Office if vacant positions exist along with the job posting announcement and updated job description. Vacant positions shall be posted internally in all city departments. Current city employees will be given priority consideration as long as they meet the required qualifications as noted in the job description. I did qualify for those qualifications. If there are no internal candidates, or the internal candidates do not meet the posted requirements, the position shall be posted externally using the city's website and other means available. Although priority consideration shall be given to internal candidates, there are no guarantees that every position will be filled from within. Some position may be posted externally at the same time as internally to ensure the best candidate for the position. When I spoke with the chief and my commanders, I knew I was the best person for the job. And then I got a letter from the city yesterday, actually it was in my mailbox. When I asked, when I applied for this job, when I talked with the mayor, I talked with the city manager, I was told that this was unethical, that me applying for this job was unethical. I asked for, we talked about, and Mary McKittrick explained what unethical meant, and that's that if I retired from a police department job and then started working for the city police department again in a different capacity, that it was unethical for the city to try and change the laws in the state of Illinois, and then have, in our own backyard, our own city, have an employee do exactly what we're trying to stop. I knew that trying to get the city to understand that this saves the city money, it's a win-win situation for the city and the police department, was not something that I was going to be able to convince Mary of in this meeting, and so I, we ended the conversation agreeing to disagree. I had a second meeting with the mayor in hopes I could try and convince the mayor of this. The letter I got yesterday from the city says, we are in receipt of your application for a community service position, which closed March 19th. I turned the application in on the 18th. After careful thought and deliberation, we are removing your application for further consideration. In order to accept the position of community service officer with the city of Geneva, you would either have to resign or retire from your current position of police sergeant. As an organization, we value the service and expertise you bring to the position of police sergeant. As such, it's the city's best interest to utilize your skills and experience. As such, it's the city's best interest to utilize your skills and experience in that role, not as a community service officer. Therefore, you are not the best fit for the organization in the position of community service officer. We look forward to your continued employment as a valued member of our leadership team in the role of police sergeant." My goal is to try and talk to the city council, and I'm not sure what the answer is to this. I know that there's the seated police department, the police pension fund, and the fire department pension fund, both have lobbyists down in Springfield, they're trying to pull the cart in the other direction regarding the city cart pulling the pension law changes in a different direction. I know that there's some changes have to be incorporated into this. Let me ask my daughter to bring up a bottle of water because I'm getting very thirsty. When the applications, when I was denied application, I learned that there were about seven other employees, retirees, police officers, I understand there's even a chief of police that applied for this position also. Their applications were forwarded to the police department for consideration for employment, and mine was not. The unethical, narrow interpretation of this is that Tim Baker cannot apply for this job, but anybody else can. And that's where I've come and asked before the city council to, I'm asking for help because I know I'm the best fit for the job. I know my chief and commanders had no idea I was coming to this meeting tonight. I made this decision on my own without any recommendation from them. I know when I first talked to the mayor, I asked about maybe reaching out to my alderman, my fourth war alderman, to see if maybe it might help me in this endeavor. The mayor cautioned me so that it probably wouldn't be a good idea, that maybe try and have a conversation with Mary first. That didn't work, and so I come before the city council to open myself up to, and ask for your help in this situation, because I know in saving money, it's a win-win situation for the city, and it's also a win-win situation for Tim Baker and the Baker family. Because I've been here for 30 years, I know what the city of Geneva is about, I know what the community is about. I'm not some person looking for, looking for a handout. I'm a hard worker, and I've gotten 30 years of good evaluations on the police department, and I'm asking for your help and consideration in this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant. It's my opinion, ladies and gentlemen, that we not engage in conversation with Sergeant Baker regarding this matter. This is, as all of you well know, an administrative decision. This is not the bailiwick of a city council or a governing board. This rests squarely on the administrative staff, and I think any conversation thereto would be problematic and perhaps open us up to all sorts of liability.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, new business?
Mayor Burns, I have a comment.
Please, join us. How are you?
Very good, thank you.
Good. If I may trouble you to share your name and spell your last name if it's a...
I'm an adamant Notre Dame fan, and I promise not to keep us here until tomorrow evening, when hopefully the women can take care of what the men didn't do.
Absolutely.
My name is Kathy Kleese, I'm a resident of Geneva for the past 27 years. My husband and I intentionally selected Geneva for its aesthetic charm and the genuine care and involvement we saw from the Geneva citizens compared to the cities to our direct north and to our direct south. We raised three beautiful daughters. None of them were on the dance team, but I was so proud of those young ladies tonight. West of the river, east of the river, west of Randall Road, north of State Street, all citizens in our city cared deeply and want Geneva to maintain its uniqueness. At the same time, they want it to change and grow responsibly, and they also want it to change and grow sensitively. Tonight, I want to share several concerns with you, the members of the city council. Many committees make the city the attraction it is to thousands of visitors each year. I am concerned that the input of two of these citizen groups was disregarded in the city council's vote on March 23rd, when they decided to demolish Sixth Street School. These two committees are the Geneva's Strategic Plan Committee. Their master plan, to my understanding, recognizes that school building as a significant historic resource. The Historic Preservation Commission unanimously voted to deny the county's demolition request on March 17th. I know those two committees very well. My husband served on both in previous years. I'm a retired assistant superintendent from a school district. I understand the input and the tough decisions that need to be made for the whole, but I also understand how important it is to look at things in a sensitive, logical, open-minded way that I heard you speak of earlier. So I request that you city council members reconsider your motion for March 23rd to permit the demolition of Sixth Street School. To begin this process, I urge one of you alderpersons who voted to overturn the Historic Preservation Commission's decision to make a motion tonight to reconsider what would provide you an opportunity to show all Geneva citizens that you want to open, reopen the debate with your fellow alderpersons. Then, with a simple majority of you, reconsider, reopen, seek input from the people who live in your wards before you oppose, before you directly oppose your city's Historic Preservation Commission and your city's Geneva Strategic Plan Committee. I believe the city of Geneva citizens would be very interested in hearing the county engineer's statements about the maintenance or lack of it for some time, in that it was a foregone conclusion that the building would be demolished. I also think that our citizens would find many of the county's explanations in their presentation sounded more like an argument to rehabilitate instead of demolish, and that no consideration was given to substantial tax credits for potential historic rehabilitation. I believe the citizens of Geneva would be very interested in hearing from the Geneva Master Plan members regarding their rationale for the stance that this building is a significant historic resource. I also strongly believe the Geneva citizens would be very interested in the Historic Preservation Commission's track record for approving most demolition requests. The data I received was that they approved 15 out of 17 such requests since 2008. To overturn their unanimous decision against demolition in such a rushed manner is not how straight-up business in this city should be. Geneva citizens, please express your concerns with all your council members and your mayor, whose emails are on the city website. Also, please reach out to the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency. If my contacts were a little better, I would read that website to you now, but I urge you to move forward in a sensitive, sensitive way and acknowledge the two committees and commissions that volunteers have given years of service to all of us in this beautiful, unique town. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Welcome, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Tim O'Neil. My wife and I have lived in Geneva since 1988. I live at 2017 Regency Court. First of all, I want to congratulate my good friends Chuck Brown and Dorothy Flanagan for 24 and 22 years of service. I thank them for their service. Dorothy's been my alderman for 20 years.
Yeah.
I am here to, just a little bit background, I was hired as an assistant states attorney in 1985. I worked there as a prosecutor for seven years. I went into private practice. Since that time, the majority of my time has been involved. I represent over 1,200 public safety peace officers in the state of Illinois through their unions. I've also represented management. I was the city attorney in St. Charles from 1997 to 2005. I know both sides of the coin. I've known Tim Baker, he started the Geneva Police Department about the same time I started at the state's attorney's office. We've had a couple of small cases together back in the day, but mostly I've seen him around town all the time. I know of his personal commitment to Operation Snowball, which he's done on his own time. I see him at St. Peter's directing the traffic on his own time when a religious education lets out, and it is a mess. This is, this is who this man is. And he called me and told me about this, and this is kind of what I do for a living. And when he told me what was going on, and then I looked at the city personnel policy, I have a real problem with Tim being denied even the opportunity to apply, and then the letter that he received yesterday. The city's personnel policy are the policies and procedures adopted by you ladies and gentlemen to run this city. That is the city law. It says, "The city is committed to the principle of recruiting and selecting employees on the basis of demonstrated and potential ability to perform the functions of the position available." None of the applicants you're gonna get will know the city of Geneva and its functions better than Tim Baker. In addition, the city is committed to the growth potential of current employees and shall, shall is mandatory, not permissive, encourage their promotion from within the city as a first means of recruitment. And finally, you can read the whole thing to yourself. "Current city employees will be given priority consideration as long as they meet the required qualifications as noted in the job description." Ladies and gentlemen, those are the policies and procedures that you have passed, and for Tim to be denied the opportunity to apply because of some potential future political consideration is wrong, and it goes against your own policies and procedures. I'd ask that you take a look at it, don't talk about it with me, don't talk about it with Tim, as the mayor suggested, talk about it among yourselves, see what your policies say. You know Tim Baker is the right guy for the job. He should allow, be allowed to follow the city's procedures on this position. I thank you for your time, and go Bocky.
Thank you, Tim. Any additional new business? From the dais?
Oh, well, it's a good reminder, Alderman Marx wanted everybody to remember to vote tomorrow, but that wasn't what I was going to talk about.
You usually do.
No, I was gonna talk about beautification.
Okay, that's good.
And our lovely community. We're gonna be planting this weekend, on Saturday, and I invite everybody to come out to the post office at 8:00 in the morning to dig in the dirt for a while and give us our pansies for the spring planting, so that's what I wanted to remind everybody about.
Thank you. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn is in order?
So moved.
Marx makes the motion. Simontian makes the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, the microphones are off.